Today on In Focus with award-winning host Yessenia Taveras. Right now, online is special guest Wilmington City Councilmember Charles Bud Freel on WITN 22. Hello, welcome to In Focus. I'm your host, Yessenia Taveras. Joining me today is Charles Bud Freel, the eighth district council member of Wilmington City Council's 107th session. Councilman Freel has served on Wilmington City Council for 24 years, and when he began his career in 1997, he started his focus on his initiatives that included providing Wilmington citizens with affordable housing, community policing, neighborhood cleanups, and rebuilding dilapidated parks. He joins us today to share with us his 24-year career as a public servant, and he joins us now. Welcome to the show.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. To start us off, if you could, Councilman Freel, share with us just your background as a Wilmingtonan.
Well, actually, I was born in Elizabeth, New Jersey, and we moved to Delaware the summer before my sophomore year in high school. And we lived out in Newcastle. I went to Slazy Adam School in Wilmington, and from there, I went on to the University of Delaware. Once getting out of university, I moved to Wilmington, I believe around 1975, and I've never left. So I've been a Wilmingtonan since 75 to the present time, and you know, I love the city and would not look to go anywhere else, to be honest with you.
Wonderful. And before you actually started your political career with Wilmington City Council in 1997, just shortly after you moved to Wilmington, you were already involved in the political realm. Share with us how you got involved at such an early age in the world of politics.
Well, my real involvement, I have two older brothers who both studied political science, my brother Ed and Kevin, and they got involved in politics at a very young age, working in campaigns. And I guess I just kind of got dragged along with them when I was about 18. I think I worked in my first election. And I was a senior in high school going into my freshman year in college. And every two years, it ended up I would be working in campaigns. You know, back then, you dropped literature, you made phone calls. You know, the typical things you would do in a campaign is kind of one of the grunts, door-to-door people. So that's how I got started, just working in elections. And then I got more and more involved in city Wilmington elections. I think the first one I worked in was when Tom Maloney ran for mayor back in the 70s, and I came into the city and helped out. And then I moved into the city around 75 and just stayed very active then in city politics.
And wasn't your involvement through the campaigns that sparked your interest? Or was there something else that actually ignited you to run for office in Wilmington City Council?
Well, what happened first, as I said, I got involved in campaigns back in the 80s, late 70s, 80s. I was a member of the Wilmington Rugby Club, and on that club was another guy named Dan Frawley. And we were both interested in politics, so we would sit and talk a lot after practice about politics in Wilmington. And in 1980, he decided to run for Wilmington City Council at large, and he won. And four years later, he decided to run for mayor of the city of Wilmington. And he asked me to run his campaign. I had never run a campaign before. I told him, I don't know if that was a very smart move, having me as a campaign manager, but that's what he wanted, and that was my first campaign. And for people that don't know a lot about that election, when we started, we were probably over 20 points behind in the polls. And we went, ended up winning the election by 200 votes. And that was the 1984-85 election, and he became mayor at that time. I did not, I did not serve in his first term, but in his second term, which started in 89, he asked me to come on board as the special assistant to mayor, which I did for four years. So that was my real start as far as really deeply getting involved in Wilmington politics, was running his campaign for mayor in 84.
And I'm sure you learned a lot of lessons in regards to how city operations work. And so take us to 1997, when you officially ran for office and you got elected. What were some of the key areas you wanted to focus on right away as a politician?
Well, what happened was, he lost the 92 election. So we left office, and it was four years there where, like everybody else, I went to community meetings and neighborhood association groups. In 96, a couple of the at-large council members decided they were going to run for higher office, which left some vacancies there. So, I mean, I thought I could bring a lot to the table, just having those four years of experience in the mayor's office, knowing how city government worked, knowing the departments. So, you know, I threw my hat in the rain. There was actually 14 candidates running in a Democratic primary that year for three seats, and I was fortunate enough to come in the top three. And that was, that was how I got on council, and I got sworn in in January of 97. And that was my start. And, you know, I was a new council member. Jim Baker was president of council at the time, but I felt I had a pretty good background in city government. And the first thing I focused on, which I focused on my whole career, was the cleanliness of the city. And the first legislation I did was a resolution. We called it Adopt a Lot. And the idea was to try to get organizations or groups to adopt a city lot that was maybe full of trash and high grass and weeds, and for them to maintain it and take care of it. It was modeled after Adopt the Block programs that you see out in the county. So that was my start on city government. I had that, I got that passed probably in my first couple of meetings as a council member.
And even though that was just the beginning, you successfully maintained 24 years as an elective official in Wilmington City Council. Talk to us what's helped you along the way to just really serve our constituents here in Wilmington, Delaware?
Well, I really, I take the position very serious. I was at large, which meant I represented the whole city. And there would be weeks, you know, Monday through Friday, where I would be hitting community meetings two or three a night because there were so many groups out there, and a number of them met on the same evenings. So I was always dedicated to the fact that, you know, I needed to go to these meetings. I needed to listen to people, talk to people, see how I can help them. And I followed that role. So I think that really helped me. You know, when every four years came up and I was running at large, I think that really helped me because a lot of the civic associations, leaderships, the presidents, vice presidents, they all knew me, and they all supported me when I ran for reelection. And it made no difference whether I was in Northeast Wilmington, Southbridge, Union Park Gardens, or 40 Acres. You know, folks knew me and were willing to continue to support the work that I was doing. I loved, even to this day, I used to love doing community cleanups and planning projects and things like that. You know, I used to always try to get out on weekends and help out with those type of things. So I just think that helped me a lot and was able to get me reelected every time I ran.
And let's talk about some of those initiatives that you just mentioned. You focused a lot on providing affordable housing for Wilmington citizens, community policing and neighborhood cleanups, and also rebuilding our city's dilapidated parks. So talk to us about all these different aspects of your career and how important it was for you to touch on so many different parts of our city.
Well, I really got into the housing end of it when, just when I started my second term. I was meeting with some folks from the West Side, the Hilltop area. They had a group called the West Side Neighborhood Coalition. And we were looking at issues in the neighborhood, you know, the houses, the crime, everything. And I did an inventory of the housing in this one census tract, which was the Hilltop. And there were about 1,000 housing units, but almost 200 of them were vacant. And, you know, it just became my belief that unless you tried to address that vacancy issue, you would never be able to uplift a neighborhood. So we actually formed a working group, called the West Side Neighborhood Working Group, that we started meeting every month back in, back in 2000. And one of the issues that I really went after was the housing piece of it. And a couple of years later, we were able to pass a piece of legislation that dealt with vacant property registration fee. And the idea was, you know, you're allowed to have a vacant property, but, you know, it does bring down the rest of the neighborhood, the block. So you'll have to pay a fee every year that it was vacant, and the fee increased as time went on. And the idea was just to encourage people to either fix the property up or sell it to someone that's going to fix it up. And that was my first major piece of legislation. It actually received national attention from the National League of Cities and received an award for the city. But that's how I got into the housing end of it. And then kind of what complimented me, complimented that was the nonprofit housing providers. You had Cornerstone, you had Interfaith, you had Habitat. And I kind of started working with them to try to acquire some of these vacant properties and fix them up and try to get homeowners into the properties. So that, that was what sent me down that path of really trying to deal with vacant properties and trying to help the neighborhoods. And of course, there's all other pieces of that, you know. Policing obviously is very important. I've always been a strong advocate of community policing, where the same officers would work an area day in and day out so that the community would get to know them, and they would get to know the community members. You know, it took a long time for us to get to the point where we are today, where neighborhoods do know their police officers, a lot of them attend community meetings, they're seen by the residents, and it's a good thing. So that's how I kind of got into the housing and the police kind of tied with it. Because I'm a believer that, you know, these neighborhoods that have challenges, you're not going to, you're not going to address them by just police enforcement. You have to, you have to look at the other things, the housing stock, the quality of the housing stock, the cleanliness of the neighborhood, and work on them at the same time to really bring a neighborhood up and have people that are proud of their neighborhood.
And you've also mentioned in regards to the work you've done just on the city's West Side. And West Side Neighborhood Coalition honored you for just your willingness to always work with them to improve the neighborhoods there. Talk to us how important it was for you to do the work there on the West Side of Wilmington.
Well, like I said, I started that working group back in 2000, and we met, we continued to meet every month up to pretty much 20,018. So it was a long period of time that I worked with those folks and got to know them really well. They became friends. You know, I remember one time I was ill, and the one group that sent me flowers and everything was the West Side Neighborhood Coalition. And even to this day, I consider them good friends of mine. Some of that actually moved away, and we still stay in contact. But they were just a very good organization, and they did a lot of things in the neighborhood. One of the things that they did every year was they had a large Christmas dinner and toy giveaway, which took place at St. Paul's. And it was really, it's really a neat event. I used to call it organized chaos because they would open these doors, and these kids and parents would just kind of streaming in to the St. Paul's cafeteria. And what I did for probably the last 10, 12 years was, I would go out and organize a drive to collect toys to help them. And, you know, every year, I would be able to drive down there and deliver, you know, 200-plus toys to them that I was able to collect for my neighbors and friends and family members to help their effort. And it was, it's just a great event, and it's just a lot of fun every year. A lot of elected officials would be there that night to help out, and I've just really enjoyed it. Like I said, those folks have stayed my friends for years, and, you know, I really cherish that friendship.
Oh, yes. And you formulated a lot of friendships throughout our community. You made sure as a politician to also serve on different boards throughout our community. You've maintained memberships with the Wilmington Housing Partnership, Friends of Woodlawn Library, St. Anthony's Community Center, Cindy Foundation for ovarian cancer research, and Los Hardines, just to name a few. Talk to us about why it was so important for you to do the work, not only as a politician, but outside as a politician, being very heavily involved within your community.
Well, you know, you're an elected official, but you're also a member of the community, a member of the city. And, you know, different groups would come to me and say, would you, would you be willing to serve on our board? And, you know, I tried, I tried to contribute. One of the groups was the Friends of Woodlawn Library. At the time, Woodlawn Library was a little row house over what they called the flats. And there was a group that had come together to build, actually build a library. And, you know, they asked me, you know, they had been formed, they hadn't, they had been working towards that, and they asked me to come on board, and I did. And we were able to get the state to give us the old DMV building that was on Grant Avenue. I don't know how many folks remember that. If you've been around Wilmington for a long time, you will remember. There was a DMV right there at Grant and Knight Street. And they had, they had vacated the building, it was sitting there empty. And we were able to get the state to give, to give us the building. And then we partnered with the city and the county to work down and build a new library that's there now, which is just a beautiful facility. And, you know, we did, trying to raise money, we did little book drives and things like that to keep the effort going. But it's a beautiful library today, and I think a real asset to that community, to the city of Wilmington. Same thing with St. Anthony's Community Center. We oversee the community center, the Antonian, and some other programs, similar Meals on Wheels program. And once again, a good friend of mine, Debbie Worth, was the executive director over there, and she asked me to come on board and help out, and I'm still on that, on that board today. The Cindy Foundation was a little different. That, that was a friend of mine who passed away at the young age of 45 from ovarian cancer. And a group of her friends put together this group called the Cindy Foundation for ovarian cancer research. And we would have two events every year. Basically, we had a 5K run and a guest bartending event. And we would raise money in her name, and we donated it to Memorial Sloan Kettering in New York, which was the hospital that she went to for her treatments for five years. And the other monies went to the Christiana Care Helen F. Graham Cancer Research Center, their special needs fund. And that fund helps patients that maybe can't afford the food they need or wigs if they need them or transportation. That fund helps them out. So we had this group going for about 10 years, and we raised over $250,000 to give to these two organizations. So it was, you know, that was a labor of love, and we really enjoyed doing it. Los Hardines, that is a small housing facility on 5th and Jackson, 5th and Jackson Street. And we have 24 housing units there, subsidized housing units for senior citizens. And it's a very nice building. Hopefully, most people have driven by it. They might not know what it is. But Los Hardines houses these seniors. It's a great building. It really helps people out that need subsidized housing. We have a very good board. It's a very community-oriented board. We work very closely with Maria Matos and the Latin American Community Center on programs. And, you know, so I've been on that board and been chairing that board for a number of years. But that's some of the work I've done. Probably the most recent group is the Land Bank, Wilmington Land Bank. And I helped, I helped drive the legislation to get the land bank created. First, we had to create legislation in Dover, and then we were the first official land bank in Delaware. And, you know, we've been up and running now a couple of years. I'm very proud of that organization and the work they're doing. Once again, they're going after vacant properties, trying to get a hold of these properties, and then turning them over to folks that want to rehab them and live in them and, you know, and help with the homeownership here in Wilmington.
Yes, not only homeownership, you really worked towards revitalizing the city of Wilmington through all of your efforts. And one of those initiatives also is that some presidents may not know, but you are the council member that sponsored the legislation to promote recycling within the city of Wilmington. And you've provided greater access to recycling. So talk to us about this initiative, the idea behind it, how it started, and now it's an ongoing thing here for city residents.
Well, it's funny because I became a believer in recycling when my daughters were born and looking at the whole issue of trash and how we manage trash and where is it all going. And back in the, I want to say, I guess probably the later 80s, there was a move by the Delaware Solid Waste Authority to increase the height of Cherry Island, which is our dump, for lack of a better word. And they want to increase it by over 100 feet at the time. And it would have made it the tallest, the tallest structure in the city of Wilmington. And a group of us pushed back on that idea. And, you know, I don't like to just say no to something. I like to try to, try to find maybe some sort of solution to help out with the problem. And at the time, there was really no recycling efforts, no serious recycling efforts going on. And then Delaware Solid Waste came up with this program where you could pay to recycle, you had to pay to recycle. And, but it was very cumbersome. You had, you had like a bag for plastics and a bag for paper and a bin for magazines, and you had to separate it all out and leave it, you know, one day every two weeks. And I happened to see an article in a small community newspaper which talked about this community up outside of Philadelphia that was doing what they call single-stream curbside recycling, where all the recycled materials go in one bin, and then they get picked up by this company. And they take it and they handle it, sort it, and they try to sell it off. And at the same time, you could get points for recycling and use those points in the area's stores and restaurants. So I just, I saw this article, and I was like, wow, I mean, we're not, we're a city, but we're not a real big city. You know, maybe this is something we could do. And I took the article and I sent it. Once, at that time, Jim Baker was mayor, and I sent it to the administration and to the Public Works folks. And I said, can we look into this? And there was an operational guy in Public Works at the time who reached out to me and said, I think it's a great idea. So we started meeting with the folks, with the company that did the recycling. We went up to Philly a number of times, visited with them and talked to them. And the company that oversaw the whole program was an outfit called Recycle Bank. And they looked at us as like, wow, if we could get this done in Wilmington, we could really take off. So it took us a while. There was a lot of, a lot of hoops we had to jump through and worked with our union to make it happen. And the funny thing is, we rolled the program out like area by area. Like, you know, we rolled it out to Hilltop and then maybe East Side. And I used to actually go out when we were, when we were delivering the bins, these big bins. At that time, they were blue. And I would get out there with them, and we'd roll the bins up and down the street and be putting them in people's houses with a little packet explaining the program. And it's the little things you never think about, but we did a couple of areas as a pilot. One of the things I got pushed back on was, who picked the color of those bins? They stand out so much, you know. So we actually went back and got like a color chart, like you would, almost like a paint chip chart, and looked at the different colors of bins. And we went with one that was more of a darker red or maroon that we thought would blend in to the, to the red brick that we have a lot of here in the city of Wilmington. So we had to go out and collect all the blue bins and then send all the new bins back out on the street. But it was really well-received by the communities. We had some issues that we had to deal with to get through, but we were able to sign up then some businesses and restaurants in Delaware and Wilmington that wanted to be part of the program. And the interesting thing was, we made it work. And then the folks at the state level started seeing it and saying, well, you know, recycling does work. And the state then started moving, and they set up a timeline when they wanted everybody in the state recycling. And there's been some changes in the program over the years, but it's still there. We still pick up recycling one day a week here in Wilmington. And, you know, it goes to a special facility that then separates the cans and the paper and the, and the magazines, and then they have outlets where they can sell those materials. And there's no extra cost to the resident. It's still part of their, you know, the taxes they pay provides for them to get one day a week trash pickup and one day a week recycling. And now, we, some years ago, we started collecting yard waste. You know, there's leaves and branches and things like that, because that can also be recycled into mulch. And then one of the things that kind of came off of that was this event that I would host every year with the Delaware Solid Waste Authority. They came to a meeting one night, and they talked about how they were going to have an event in Newark to collect household hazardous waste, which most people don't know what to do with, you know, when they have it. It can be poisons, it can be paints, it can be chemicals, things like that. And the other meeting, I said, well, that's very nice you have one in Newark, but we're the biggest city in the state. How come you don't have an event here? And I was finally able to talk to them to have an event. We set it up. This is back in 2005, the first time we had one. And we set it up down at Frawley Stadium, and I remember the director of the Solid Waste Authority saying to me, listen, Bud, if only 50 cars show up, we're not doing it again. You're done. We had well over 1,000 cars show up that day. It was just, it just overwhelmed us. And then from there, every year kind of grew a little bit where not only did we do hazardous waste, we do electronic recycling, and you can also be, bring paper there and have it shredded right on the site. And we still do those every year. We actually did it this past October down at Frawley Stadium. And it's just a great event. And now the Delaware Solid Waste Authority does a couple a month throughout the whole state because it was such a successful event. So that was another way for us to keep things out of our, out of the Cherry Island, Grant landfill and have the materials go somewhere else. So, yeah, it's, it's something I got involved in back in the early 2000s, and it just kind of grew. And, you know, now it's just a great program here in the city of Wilmington, and I'm sure it will continue to be so.
And it's something very beneficial to our communities, just being able to reuse those materials by recycling them. One may not even think about how beneficial that is, but as you just may mention too, it also reduces the waste in our landfill, and it was a great educational opportunity for residents. They got to learn more about which items to recycle. And one of the things I remember early on, besides getting a tour of the facility, you also acknowledged a lot of citizens at the Lewis L. Redden City County Building. And there used to be a huge banner right there in the lobby that actually paid tribute to the top recyclers. So that was just an amazing initiative.
Yeah, the other thing we did initially in that program for several years is working with the land bank again. We would go out and get like coloring books and pencils and things like that and put a little bag together. We would go into some of the grade schools here in Wilmington and have, you know, they have assembly with all the students. And we would go and talk about recycling and give them these handouts and things like that. Because we looked at it, we looked at it almost like years ago when they were trying to get people to stop smoking. Probably the best messengers were the kids, you know, why, mom, why do you smoke? Dad, why do you smoke? And you end up trying to quit. And we were trying to do the same thing with our young people, encouraging them to recycle and kind of taking that message home with them. And then a lot of the schools started recycling as a school. So it was really a great initiative, and there were, there were a lot of successful pieces to it. And I'm just glad that the program still continues today.
And one of your other initiatives too was to revitalize Baynard Stadium, which is an iconic stadium here in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. And there was a lot of partnerships involved in this revitalization. It's finally been completed, and they had like a grand opening right here during the pandemic in 2020. Share with us this initiative, partnership, and why it was so important to find ways to revitalize a staple stadium within our community.
Well, Baynard Stadium, I'm not sure exactly when it was built, but it was probably built back in the 50s and 60s. So it's got some years to it. And it's been, it's owned by the city of Wilmington, but maintained by the state of Delaware's Department of Parks and Recreation. And what we were finding was, it needed work. We had one set of bleachers that collapsed, and neither the state or the city really had the money to replace them. We finally scraped it together. But there are different schools, high schools, that have been using Baynard Stadium for mostly football. St. Elizabeth, Slazy Adam, Howard High, I think Delaware Military Academy might use it now. And back when this happened about six years ago, I was approached by the president of Slazy Adam. Once again, I was a graduate of Slazy Adam High School. And he came to me and he said, listen, if we could kind of lease that stadium, a long-term lease for the city, we will raise money to invest capital into rebuilding Baynard Stadium. And then at the same time, we will reach out to community organizations like youth football leagues, soccer leagues, so that they can use the field also, because it was getting very little use, believe it or not, as a facility. There were the football teams and some track events, and that was pretty much it. So I thought it was a great idea because I just knew the city, understanding the city finances, I knew we were never going to have the money that needed to go into that stadium. Just the bare minimum would have been 12, 13 million dollars that we would have needed. And that would have just kind of restored some pieces to it. And they came to us and said, we want to, we want to rebuild the whole stadium. We want new bleachers, you know, new tracks, football field, offices for both the Wilmington and the city of Wilmington and the state of Delaware, and, you know, new bathrooms, everything. And we were like, this is fantastic. And uh, you know, new bathrooms, everything. And uh we were like, this is fantastic if we can make this work. And then we just went through a series of negotiations and up and down and some politics got involved in it, slowed it down. Uh but we, you know, we kept our eye on the ball. Mayor, Mayor Mike Prisicki came into office and I I said, Mike, I said, one of the things we need to revisit. Is the offer from Slazy Adam. And we did. And through his uh efforts and his administration. We finally were able to sign an agreement with them. And they have invested, you know, probably close to twenty-five million dollars in that stadium. And anybody that hasn't seen it, if they can just go out there and walk around, it is just, it's a beautiful stadium. I was with some folks recently chatting with them about it and they said, you know, they said, bud, that's, that's as nice as a lot of college stadiums. You know, they said, that that place is beautiful. And it is. It's, I was there for a game back in October. And it was just a lot of fun to be there now as as a new stadium. I I went there obviously back in the sixties when I went to Sally's. And uh the change is just, it's just incredible. And now the high schools are back there playing and then there'll be youth football games there and it's it's just gonna be a great asset. For the city of Wilmington for for many, many years to come.
It truly is. It's a beautiful facility, like you said, but most importantly, I do believe, like you just made mention to. It's going to give the participants, the uh high schoolers, just that college level experience. Because now you're playing the game on a whole different level. And uh you you really feel that presence as soon as you step into that facility. It's it's just been remarkable to see how great of a revitalization effort uh that kind of came to.
Yeah, it's it's a great facility and, you know, it's uh it's it has the lights at night, so you get to play night games there, which a lot of the high schoolers love to do. Uh so I just think it's a great asset for this city. Uh and it's just, you know, it's gonna be like that. And and the agreement is that as it needs more capital investments. So lazy Adam uh as part of the lease will make those, make those investments. So it's now called Abecino Stadium after Rocco Abecino, who uh uh made a very, very large. Contribution to the effort. Um but uh it's it's just, it's just a beautiful facility. I just think as Wilmingtonans, we should be so proud of. Of what we were able to accomplish there.
And Councilman Frill, twenty-four years is a very long time to serve as a a political figure on Wilmington City Council. And in this short interview, we cannot even begin to share all the differences that you've made. Uh not only legislation wise, but within our community, as you've mentioned. Uh within the twenty-four years, is there anything else that you'd like to speak to? Uh that really actually hones in on your legacy that you're leaving behind as a council member?
Well, you're right, twenty-four years is a long time and uh. Uh I think sometimes I I I should have had my head examined. I don't know how I lasted this long, but it's been an experience. I probably the one area we haven't touched on um that I I am proud of of the work I was able to do. Uh was as chairman of the uh finance committee of 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 s- city council. Uh I've chaired that committee for twelve years now, which I believe is the longest serving chairman. I chaired under three different mayors, uh three different presidents of council. Uh two different uh city treasurers and obviously numerous council members. But there's two areas that I'm I'm proud of is the the one that. Uh one is that I I believe that, you know, we have a tax structure here of of wage tax and property tax. And uh the wage tax can only be increased by the legislature. We can increase the property tax. But you have to be careful because, you know, if if you start taxing to the point where people are moving out of the city, businesses are leaving. You know, you're you're creating other problems then. And I think I was able to uh, you know, push a, push a position and a policy that we needed. To keep control on our tax increases. Uh but still find ways to to provide efficient and effective services to the city of Wilmington. Understanding as a city, we can't do everything and we have to tell people that. Uh. And uh I think, I think we are still very competitive. Uh with the county and other uh other areas to uh to attract homeowners. And uh and businesses to the city of Wilmington. The other piece of our um financial service is the the water sewer fund. And uh we've we've always had a separate water sewer fund. It wasn't always financially separate from our general operating budget. Uh but it was considered a a separate fund. And when I first took over about twelve years ago, that fund was in a real bad shape. It was running as a deficit. Um and the the bonding agencies basically came to us and said, you know, you guys are gonna have to clean up your act. And 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 make this fund uh self-sufficient, uh what they call an enterprise fund. Which means that it should be paying for itself. We should be collecting the water fees and then using that money. To do uh to run the operation, plus the same time make infrastructure improvements. I don't know how many people know this, but we have water lines in the city of Wilmington over a hundred years old. So it's 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 an old system. And we had to make some tough decisions back then. Um we've had to increase the water rates. Uh uh for many years, we've been increasing them. Because at one time, I mean, Wilmington residents were paying like here and every other facility was paying way up here. So we just were not taking in enough money. To run that facility. And we had to go out and explain to people that they're gonna have to pay more for water. And you know, it's funny, I I would go to meetings and people start yelling at me about the increase in the water rate. And uh I always took one of those bottles of water that you can buy at the store with me. And I would say to them, now when you go home tonight, look at your water bill. And I said, calculate how much you're paying for water with the city of Wilmington. And usually it was less than a penny a gallon. I said, but you'll go out and buy this bottle of water for ninety-nine cents or a dollar twenty-nine and never say a word about it. But the water you're using to to uh prepare your food or uh for your, for your kids to bathe in. You're gonna complain because you're paying less than a penny a gallon. And it usually quieted people pretty quickly. And I think over the years, we've been able to show people how important. Uh that fund is. And now I'm happy to say uh that fund has a surplus. Plus we have a sixty-day reserve in case anything ever happens, uh we can get through it. But I really uh encourage, you know, the future council that you really should look at increasing those rates. You know, maybe three percent a year to keep up, almost like you would with any other utility. Um and uh we've really come a long way. In fact, uh just this morning, I was on a meeting with the uh. Utility Ci- Citizens Advisory Board, which was a group I helped start some years ago, which is private citizens. Who uh keep an eye on that uh uh utility, plus make a recommendation to the mayor every year on on the rates. And um it's just a great operation now. It runs very well. And uh it's something that people I probably don't think about. Uh usually they're only upset about it because we're increasing their rates, but uh. I'm very proud of the work that I did there and with the general operating budget and trying to keep us uh. A viable option for for new residents and businesses. Um and like I said, I've been on there for twelve years now. And that's probably the toughest part of stepping away from that. Uh as far as leaving council, but uh uh I'm 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 confident the next council will continue to work and do a good job.
I I appreciate the insight that you just provided for us because uh that was actually gonna be uh my next question, just for you. Serving uh for the longest in the history of Wilmington City Council as the chair of the Finance Committee. Uh what would you recommend for uh the one-way session and on to continue to uh look at and hone into? And then you just made mention to a few of those items. But is there anything else that uh you would say that you took away? From not only chairing that committee for twelve years, but also being a part of the Education Youth and Families Committee. And the Public Safety Committees uh for the constituents who are not knowledgeable of what these committees, what these committees do for uh our city. What could you take away from that that you could share with us? Um the importance of each committee and why we have them and initially why you made sure you served on them?
Well, as a council member, the committees, part of our legislative process. Is that when an ordinance gets introduced, it gets referred to a committee. And it has to be voted out of that committee and then brought back to the full council for a vote. Uh each council member sits probably on about three different committees over a period of time. And um uh so that, and and at the committee meetings is when you really kind of vet out the that the legislation. And it can be contracts. It could be, it can be contracts for the water sewer fund. Uh not too long ago, we did a contract to uh to change the lights here in the city of Wilmington. Uh to have a more of a smart light program. Uh it could be contracts to to redo a park. And obviously the Finance Committee has a lot of other issues they deal with. Um but. You can go and today, you know, everything's televised, so you can actually, you know, sit at home and watch these meetings. And learn a little bit more about how how the city operates. Um you know, I always, I've always told. One of the things I've always done while I'm on council is when a new group comes in. I always reached out to them and said, hey, would you like to sit down and have breakfast and just, you know, chat and talk about city government? And especially did that after becoming Finance Chair. And one of the things I always say to them, I said, you know what? Spend the first year just listening, you know? Don't worry about making speeches and things like that. Just listen and and learn about city government. Um you know, when you have a bill in front of you, make sure you read it. If you have questions. Uh don't be afraid to go to the department head that might oversee that bill, whether it's public works or parks. Uh you might have to go to the law department to understand things, but you know, really just kind of, you know, almost like on a school, study and learn. And be a good listener, you know, and and when you go to community meetings, say, hey, we have this issue out there. How do you feel about it as residents, you know? Uh because it's their tax dollars that you're spending every day in these programs. And you have to understand that you can't do everything, I mean, especially for city government. Uh we're in a lot better shape than a lot of city governments, but you still have to say no to things. And um you have to be smart and. Uh we love to spend money on lots of other things that we just can't do. And but uh it's it's just. The way our system is set up is good in that we we really vet these, vet these issues before the committee, before it comes for a full vote. Uh but uh it it takes work and, you know, if you really wanna be. Uh a successful and positive elected official, you really need to understand what you're voting on. And at my last meeting about a week or so ago, one of the things I said to the to the council members returning and the new ones is. You know, whenever you have a bill before you vote on the merits of that piece of legislation. You know, you'll hear about people, I'm not gonna vote for this because I'm mad at you about A, B, or C, or. Or uh, you know, I want this before I'll vote for this bill. Or, yeah, I'll vote for this, but then you have to vote for that. You know, I don't think any of that is good for government. Uh I really think you should look at every piece of legislation. And vote on the merits of that legislation. And and, you know, there's gonna be times people are upset with you. I mean, I've had people get mad at me. Uh i- in my, in my area here. And with the social media today, they go on social media and just blast away and calling names and everything else, which is part of the business today, but. Um I really think if if, you know, if you just look at the issue and even as a resident, you know, look at the issue, make sure you understand it. Discuss it with your elected officials, whether it's city, county, state, federal. Uh and make sure you understand what their position is. And they're not always gonna agree with you. Uh but at least if you give them an honest answer and explain why you've taken that position, I think people will accept you.
Definitely. And uh Councilman Frill, one thing that I admire about your story and just your journey as a public servant. Is that uh it's very challenging in any state in the United States of America to run for a political seat. And then to actually be elected for one more term or many terms after that. But most importantly for you, you didn't only serve as council member of the eighth district, there was a time in your political career too. Where you served as a council member at large. So talk to us about the differences that you've experienced between these two seats. And how it was just very beneficial for you overall as a political figure in Wilmington, Delaware.
Well, as I said, uh I first ran at large back in ninety-six, uh when there were some open seats. And I really wanted to be at large so that I could look at the, at the whole city on on when talking about policy. I wouldn't worry about what my district's getting versus your district. Uh I could look at policies on a citywide basis, which helped me when I was dealing with housing and finances and stuff like that. And uh I really enjoyed that. Now, the the tough part was, we have so many community groups here in the city of Wilmington. And I felt strongly I had to go to these, you know, be seen at these meetings, that it was tough. I'd be out every night. Uh going to a couple of different community group meetings. And you know, sometimes running in this one for a half hour, then running to the next one for a half hour. Uh and it was, it was hard. And um at the same time, um uh I started my family late in life. Uh I was starting a family. Um so what happened was I served, I got elected four times at large. And then the uh the council member of the eighth district was leaving, which is where I live. And uh I had some people approach me and say, uh why don't you just run for the district seat? You know, it might be easier for you. Uh less time consuming. And uh I gave it some thought. Uh I had made the decision then. That I was not gonna run for higher office for another office. So I I dropped back uh to the eighth district. Uh eight years ago. Um I had gotten encouragement from the presidents of the civic associations and everything, so. And it actually was a big change for me because every four years I was running in these at-large primaries. And then I I ran for my district seat. I had no opposition, both in the primary or the general election uh both times I ran. So I was really, really fortunate. Uh but I I will tell you. Uh the district seat was just, just as time-consuming as being at large. It was just a lot of different kind of issues and a lot more of them locally that you got, had to get involved in as the district council member. Where the at large, when I was at large, I could kind of pick and choose which ones I really wanted to jump into uh with both feet. So um I don't regret any of my decisions. Uh I've been very happy and it's been a real honor for me to serve uh. You know, the citizens of the city. And even though I've been district for eight years. I was still chairing the Finance Committee, which obviously has a citywide perspective. I have friends all over the city now because of my work at large, who still call me on a regular base when they have an issue. So in a sense, I I'm listed as a district council member, but I still did a lot of reaching out constituent work throughout the whole city of Wilmington.
Yes, and you've also mentioned just now uh your family. And that's one thing I definitely want to speak on. Because I remember early on when you became a father, uh your children were always involved. Rose and Molly, you would see them there. Uh city council meetings. And one thing that I admire about uh your walk as a public servant is that. You weren't hesitant in regards to keeping your family involved. Uh and they've been there since the beginning. Uh talk to us about just the balance that you've been able to uh maintain. I know it's probably pretty hectic for your family. Uh to to witness you as a public servant, giving your time to the community, but your wife's been there for you. Your children have been providing support. Uh just give us that insight uh or enlighten us on how you've been able to keep it afloat, even for some new uh politicians who. Are actually entering the world of uh public service and have a family they of their own. They might not know what it takes. And I believe this moment here that you'll share with us gives us uh an insight on how you've been able to do it for twenty-four years.
Well, I was very fortunate. Uh actually, when I first went on council, I was a single, single guy. And uh I got married while I was on council and then my first child came along during my first term. My Rose was my oldest daughter. And um uh I think the thing that has kept me sane all these years on council was the fact. Especially when they were small, coming home at night and then coming to the do- running to the door all the time. I mean, it was the greatest. Greatest thing in the world and you could leave everything outside as soon as, as soon as you walked in the house. Uh and I made a decision back then that um. When it came to some events, uh like dinners or cocktail parties or some groundbreaking events that. If I couldn't take them with me, I wouldn't bother going to the event. Uh it just wasn't that important to me. Um so there were things on the weekends when I could take them with me, especially Rose when when she first came along. I mean, I started. Taking her to meetings and stuff in her little uh carrier, you know? And it was funny because people got to know her, you know? If I showed up without Rose, everybody was like, where's Rose, you know? And um it's funny, some years, she was about six or seven years old and we had formed this group called. Uh the Clean Wilmington Committee, where we would get together once a month and discuss issues about trash and litter in the city. And Rose would come to these meetings with me. And we we were, we we would meet down at the riverfront uh in the Chase Center and we had a big table. There'd be about twenty of us around that table. And we'd be discussing things. And this one meeting, you know, I'm taking questions. These are all private citizens, community leaders, some department personnel, things like that. And uh one meeting, Rose raises her hand, right? Everybody kind of looks at her. I said, yes, Rose. She said, well, what are you going to do, she says, about this litter that I see on the streets when I'm driving around? So everybody's head went from her back to me. Waiting for my response and how I was gonna address this uh question to my daughter. So I tried to explain to her. Oh, we're gonna have these programs, we'll clean up and all that. And uh so she got a taste of it at a very early age. And uh and it was my trooper going with me to a lot of meetings for for years. And then uh and then Molly came along and uh uh kind of picked up where Rose left off. As Rose got older. She wasn't that, that interested hanging out with dad as much anymore. And then Rose, uh Molly started filling in for me. Uh but I I mean, I was, I've just been very fortunate. Um uh I have a very supportive, loving wife. My two daughters, uh there's nothing like having daughters in this world. And uh we're all very close. Uh Rose is now, you know, a junior in college. And Molly's in high school. Uh but uh they 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 made it, they made it worthwhile. And they also gave me, gave me a perspective on. also gave me, gave me a perspective on things, on, on how to look at issues. I, I think I mentioned earlier on, I really got into recycling thinking about their future and what they would have to deal with someday, when we're no longer here, when, when you're dealing with trash and storing trash and where it's at go and things like that. And there's just been a number of issues, you know. For, for a father of daughters now, there's nothing more exciting than to see a woman as, as going to be our vice president in, what, maybe one month from now, you know. And it's just very exciting to have them be part of this whole thing. And, and especially in Delaware right now with Joe Biden becoming president. You know, they've been watching stuff. They, you know, Molly was able to go down the riverfront and see some of his speeches and things like that. So it's a very exciting time. And I think it's a very exciting time for young women. You know, we haven't broken all the glass ceilings yet, but we're, but they're getting there more and more. I praised the last meeting. I praised both Presidents Anifa Shabazz and Councilmember Lorna Walsh. Both of them had put cracks in that glass ceiling. And I just, I just think it's great. But I'm just, they, you know, 24 years, as you said, is a long time to be going to meetings and putting up with the, the phone calls and people stopping by. I would have never been able to do it without their love and support. So I, I consider myself a very, very lucky guy, believe me.
And so do so many constituents here in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. It's amazing to hear how you've not only influenced your daughters, but also so many of individuals who ran for office. And you've shown your support not only to women, but men as well. And that really goes a long way, Councilman Frill. And it talks to the true testament on your character and who you are as a person. One thing I also admire about you is that your relationships, they span from all types of ethnicities. You're very passionate in regards to diversity and making sure everyone's included in the process. I, I know so many of us are going to miss you on Wilmington City Council. Could you share with us before we leave, as we turn this thing around full circle, what's next for you? I know your political career is coming to an end. You may not be helping others who are running for office and in your future now, that the election process has been completed. But share with us, for those who are interested, what's next for Bud Frill?
Well, you might be surprised by this answer. I had no idea. I left my full-time state job in July. And of course, I'll finish up city council in a couple of weeks. I have not made any plans. I'm still serving on some boards that I serve on as pri, as a private citizen. But I have not made any specific plans and I probably won't until after I'm finished up with council. It's still taking up some of my time with meetings and, and things like that. But hopefully, you know, I've been doing two jobs for 20, 24, 25 years now. And when people ask me, why are you, why are you quitting? Or why are you stepping down? You know, I'm very honest with them. I just said, it's been long enough and I, you know, I need a break. And, you know, I do believe it's time to pass the torch on to the younger folks and let them get involved in government and play a role. I've tried to encourage that in, in some young people here in Wilmington. But I don't have any specific plans. I mean, I hope to find something part-time. I hope to continue to do some nonprofit work. But I think, as my daughters ask me, what are you going to do, Dad? I said, well, for a couple of months, I'm just going to sit on my front porch and take it easy.
Yes, take it all in and enjoy that time you have.
Yep, yes.
And lastly, before we leave, is there anything or any parting words you would like to leave with our constituents who had the pleasure of electing you for 24 years in office?
You know, all I can say is, it's just been an incredible honor to serve in this city. I've always said, this is just, you know, I think it's a fantastic, beautiful city and it's, it's, and it's, it is that way because of the people that live here. There are so many people that commit themselves to the city as volunteers, either serving on boards or commissions or community groups, or, you know, they go out and do the cleanups to try to make their neighborhood a little better, or they're involved in, you know, helping young people out or helping our seniors. And, you know, we talked about toy drives and things like that. I just think it's a great city, made up of some great people. And, you know, I'm not going to say I'm going to miss them because hopefully I'm going to continue to see them. I have made so many friendships over the years since becoming a council member of, of folks that I got to know through their different civic associations who are, are friends of mine to this day, you know, who I'll hear from or see. And I, I just don't know if I can put into words how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve this city for the last 24 years. It's really been, been quite a joy. And I cherish every moment of it. And hopefully I'll find some different ways to, to continue to serve in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your time. I'm most certain that your legacy is going to remain within Wilmington. And so many people are just so fortunate to have you as a council member. Very grateful for all of the initiatives and impact that you've made within our city. So congratulations to you for completing so many years on Wilmington City Council. And just staying true to the core of who you are as a person in regards to making change within the city of Wilmington, Delaware. I'd just like to take this time just to say thank you for being a guest on In Focus. It's been an honor to hear your story from beginning to end and being able to have the opportunity to share that with our viewers.
Well, thank you. I know I'm being interviewed by an award-winning journalist here. And I hope I'm not hurting your reputation or your ratings with this show. But thank you very much. I really appreciate the time you, you gave me today.
My pleasure. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for watching this episode of In Focus. It's been a true honor to bring before you the story behind Charles Bud Frill, a council member who served 24 years on Wilmington City Council. For future showings of In Focus, be sure to follow us on Facebook at WITN22WILM and subscribe to our YouTube channel at WITN Channel 22. I've been your host, Sydneya Taveras. Thank you so much for watching. I'll see you again soon.